City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded August 17, 2020.
At seven o'clock, we will call the regular Common Council meeting to order. Before we get started, I want to lay down a few of the reminders that we typically do. Please keep yourself on mute unless you are speaking. If you wish to speak on a specific item, I'll call for public comments. If you're a member of the public, you can unmute yourself. Or if you're on video, you can indicate by a wave or something along those lines. There's also a virtual hand that you can raise. And we will try and be, move slowly to make sure that if people are having some technical difficulties, that we get them in there. If you're an alderperson wishing to speak, we will do the alderperson's obviously first. Again, same motions, unmute yourself, raise your hand. And everyone, before you speak, please identify yourselves. Simple name and district would be fine, and we would all appreciate that. With that, I will ask Clerk Kramer to call the roll, please.
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nable.
Here.
Zarazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebon.
Here.
Leek.
Here.
Dalton.
Dalton, here.
Fischler.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
All present.
All present. If you would join me, there's a flag behind me. We can use that and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We have a few items on the agenda that are going to take a little bit of time, but a couple of things that I wanted to update everyone on. First, I want to thank Clerk Kramer. She has been working on obtaining a secure ballot drop-off box. It's my understanding now that that is on order, and we will be determining a location for that. To make early voting, the absentee ballot drop-off, you can of course drop them off at the clerk's office, but now we're going to have a remote site to drop them off, and it's going to be secure, and it's going to make voting that much easier for everybody. So, thank you, Carlin, for all your hard work in that regard. We also, as Comptroller Treasurer Lattick can attest, have been working on the capital budget, and we're getting started also on the operational budget. Our capital budget is always challenging because we have, we have so much more requests than we have allocated for funds. You know, as everyone here knows, we could never fix all of our roads. We can never, you know, have enough amenities. Our parks could always use more money. We could always use newer vehicles. So it's a juggling act that gets really tricky sometimes. This year, we asked all of the department heads and the alders to come up with their requests for capital. And over the next week or two, the comptroller and I will be meeting with all of those department heads and trying to figure out how we're going to cut about $2 million from all of those requests. And that's everything from road repair to utilities, to police and fire equipment, to parks maintenance, and pretty much everything in between, our garbage trucks, things like that, fleet vehicles. So it looks like we're going to have to cut about $2 million out of the requests this year. And of course, those needs don't go away. Some of them just get carried over to next year, which makes even, next year even more challenging. So keep an eye out for that. And Corey, do we have a date set? Are we presenting the finance in September?
Yes, we are presenting the finance September for the capital budget. And then September finance, it'll just be the presentation, a chance to ask any questions. And then it'll be up for approval at the October finance and October council meetings.
Okay, and you've got the special date already set for the operational budget too, right? October 28th, something like that?
Yes, it's always the fourth Monday of October, so it'd be October 26th.
26th. Okay, so those are some things to look forward to. And with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is persons who wish to address the mayor and council for, on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing, should register their request at this time. Now, that is normally our public comment section. We are, we've been waiving that because it gets very difficult to try and keep track of everything during a virtual meeting like this. So we offer quite a bit of latitude. We don't have any public hearings, and each of our agenda items, we'll offer the public an opportunity. But what I do need to know is if there's anyone who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item. We already have Rachel Atkinson-Leach, who is registered to speak. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item?
Yeah, Bob Weir.
Bob Weir, non-agenda. Okay, anyone else?
Alder Morrow.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, Alder Dome, I'm wondering if I can request that Agenda Item Number 12, the Development Agreement, be moved to basically Item Number 6 after the consent agenda. I just feel like there might be a number of public members participating, and putting that higher on the agenda would be appropriate.
Okay, well, let's, Polly, I'm going to have to meet you. Okay, there we go. So let's hold off on that for now, and we'll do their request after the non-agenda item. One more time, is there anyone who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, I don't see anything in the chat. I don't see any other indications. So we will move on to that item, Item Number 4, which is persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding any non-agenda item. And Rachel Atkinson-Leach, you will get to go first, whenever you're ready, ma'am.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Hello, I am Rachel Atkinson-Leach. Hello, Mayor, Common Council members and attendees. I serve as the president of Door to Dreams, and that's what we're here to talk to you about today and introduce ourselves. We are an organization that advocates for the ADD adult community. To get, to let you know a little bit about us, the lack of affordable housing is a problem for many Americans. But for individuals with intellectual and/or developmental disabilities, or ADD for short, it is especially challenging. Housing for the ADD population needs to prioritize independence, safety, integrated communal living, technology, and affordability. Safety is especially important as people with ADD experience sexual assault at a rate seven times that of those without disabilities. In response to this unmet need, a group of parents of ADD adults and community members came together to form Door to Dreams to address the housing option shortfall in our community. Door to Dreams is a nonprofit organization partnering with the Community Foundation to assist adults with ADD live, work, and thrive independently of their own choice within the Stevens Point community. We are one of many groups forming around the country to solve the same challenge. Many are here, right here in Wisconsin, like home of our own in New Glarus, and everyone needs a community in Marshfield. The crisis is now and will continue to worsen as parents and caregivers age. Housing for adults with ADD is a nationwide problem. As many as 75% of ADD adults live with a parent or other caregiver. One out of six ADD adults are living with a caregiver 60 years of age or older. As those caregivers age, many worry that their adult children risk being institutionalized or becoming homeless. In addition, every year, adult children risk being, graduate from schools and transition programs. And then what happens next for these young adults? A life of isolation. What is the housing situation in our community? According to the Stevens Point Housing Survey conducted in July 2017, there were only two properties with long waiting lists targeted for special needs housing totaling 16 beds. This only covers an estimated 4% of the adult ADD population. What happens to the other 96%? The same survey also recommended more of this type of housing is needed. So basically, our mission is, is really your mission. We are seeking an increase in funding, development, and opportunities to promote quality community-based housing. We are requesting the Common Council to afford Door to Dreams, a seat at the table, and community development discussions and long-term planning efforts. We want to work with you on your next housing study or to identify the local demand in any way that is helpful. We want to learn what your needs are and work collaboratively to make Stevens Point a leader in inclusive housing for all that's needed. Remember, we all have the potential to be one accidental second away from being an ADD adult ourselves. Thank you on behalf of Door to Dreams.
Thank you, Rachel. And where might someone find out more about Door to Dreams?
We have a website. It's actually doordreams.org. So it's D-O-O-R, the number 2, dreams, D-R-E-A-M-S.org. And you can find the contact information there as well as email.
Thank you, Rachel, and we appreciate you coming here. I know our discussions that were, that you and I had in regards to this is something that we feel is very important, and I know it's a hot topic in our community. I appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you very much for your, for your attention today.
Thank you. Next up, we have Bob Weir. Bob, are you still there?
Yeah, I was having a problem getting the mic turned on. It's Bob Weir, 727 Second Street. You know, I've been licensed to operate motor vehicles on public highways since I was 16 years of age. What happened for age 16, statute of limitations, take care of that. But anyway, I've operated vehicles, motor vehicles, in Asia, North America, and Europe. And all that testing and driving, I've never encountered the white and yellow street markings that we currently place on our city streets. The bicycle bunch may understand them, but the majority of us who have three pedals, an accelerator, a brake, and a clutch, don't. Since Dana Williams from the City PD referenced Section 9.12, I believe it was, of the city ordinance, I looked it up, and I looked up the ordinance. And guess what? Regarding street markings, crickets. There was a lot of information about bike laws, but nothing about yellow and white street markings. However, I did learn that the ordinance designates no fewer than 20 bike lanes and 20 bike ways within the city. But most of them don't coincide with what we've placed down on our streets as far as this extremely expensive street paint job. I suggest the city print out flyers explaining the markings for distribution to all city residents, at least motor vehicle operators, and also distribute them to checkpoints throughout the city. These flyers then can be distributed to visitors, visiting drivers, and those just passing through the city. If no proactive attempt is made to educate the driving public, the only inference that I can draw would be that it's a coordinated covert attempt to improve the cash flow of the municipal court. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. That's a really good idea. We'll get our Bicycle Pedestrian Street Safety Commission involved in that and see if we can't do some more education. And lastly, we have Alderperson Morrow.
Yes, Mayor, yes, thank, thank you very much. I was trying to inquire as to when early voting starts, and Clerk Kramer let, you know, it was October 20th, two weeks prior. I just wanted to let folks know that there is early voting, and there will be a very heavy election. And if you could, if you could get down to the courthouse to vote early, please, please also do that.
Good advice. Thank you, Alder Morrow. With that, our list is exhausted, and we will move on. Alder Dalton had a request to move Item Number 12 on your agenda, which is the Development Agreement for the redevelopment of the Fox Theater at 1116 and 1128 Main Street, up to Item Number 6, which would be immediately after the consent agenda. Is there any objection to doing so? See head shaking, so that's good. I don't see any comments. I don't see other, any, any other visual indicators. So with that, then I will move Item Number 12 up to Item Number 6, and then everything else will bump back down. All right, Item Number 5 is on page four of your packets, Alders, and that is our consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Mayor Alder Niebon here, District 7.
Yes.
I would like to pull the discussion, and what I believe is an action of the Public Policy and General Government Committee relating to overnight parking in order for this body to give staff some guidelines as to how they should go forward with the plan that they have been charged with completing.
Okay, that seems appropriate. We'll pull that item for discussion. Is there any other items that wish to be pulled for further discussion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, this is the city attorney speaking, and I just want to mention that I spoke to Alder Niebon about this earlier today. And in my opinion, we do not have the agenda structured in a manner that allows for there to be discussion and action on what she's asking for. It's not listed anywhere in the agenda notice. It's only listed in the full minutes that are part of the packet and not part of the notice that's published in order to satisfy our Chapter 19 requirements for open meetings.
Correct.
Okay, but we, so are you saying that agenda items from the consent agenda can only be pulled if they're listed as a bullet point?
That's what I'm saying.
Even though, in the past, we've offered opportunities to speak on things that weren't listed specifically. So again, we're saying that because it wasn't, it didn't have a separate bullet point, meaning a number under the consent agenda, that we are not going to be allowed at this time or the future to talk about any of those things unless they are listed separately?
Well, if it's listed in the agenda that is published to satisfy our requirements for notice, which is just the first couple pages with the numbered listings, we cannot use the contents of the entire minutes as sort of a looking glass into a full discussion or even action on anything that happened to be mentioned. If that were the case, we could, you know, any comment that somebody threw out in the course of a meeting that got recorded in the minutes about whatever topic would be fair game with, as a complete surprise to anyone who might be interested in that topic and therefore didn't tune into the meeting because they didn't have notice under the law that it would be discussed.
Okay, so like for, for example, we didn't have one this month, but when the Board of Public Works Director does his report at the committee meetings, we're not allowed to talk about that under the consent agenda because we typically don't list that as an item simply because it's a report.
Right. And, you know, there's, you know, I suppose there's maybe a difference to be discussed at a later date in terms of discussion versus action. But I, as much as I can sympathize with Alder Niebon wanting to have this addressed immediately, like I said, she and I discussed it earlier today. She'd left a message for me, and I'm very certain about what I'm putting forward right now.
Okay, so yeah, even though the committee took action where it says that they're sending it back to staff to come up with an appeal process for overnight parking, we're not allowed to talk about that because at this point, staff doesn't have a whole lot of direction.
What I'm seeing is that for purposes of Chapter 19, the contents of those minutes may as well not even exist. They weren't published in the newspaper, nor would we ever be able to practically publish the entire meeting packet as, as an agenda, so to speak.
Okay, yeah, we will probably have to re-look at our consent agenda items because I don't want to inhibit anybody from speaking on something that was discussed at committee, even though they're going to be approving it. We'll have to talk about that. But if that is the view of the attorney, then we will not be able to pull that, Alder. If you'd like, it could certainly be put on another agenda item. I'm sorry, a future agenda, rather.
Indeed, with all due respect, I did speak with Attorney Beverage and mostly talked about, talked about the issue in terms of the discussion. Upon rereading the agenda, in my mind, the issue being sent back to staff created an action by the committee. So I thought it might be worth bringing it forward from a different, looking at it from a, that perspective. So I appreciate the discussion, and we'll, I'll let it go for now. Thank you.
Alder Dalton, you had a comment on that?
Yeah, I guess I agree with your perspective, Mayor, that if that is some sort of legal policy that I don't understand why it hasn't been, you know, brought to our attention in the past. In my experience in other communities is that all items from previous minutes and actions of the committees on the consent agenda were open and available for discussion at the full council. And so I guess I totally disagree with the legal opinion that we're receiving. And I think especially if Alder Niebon has articulated that the intention is to bring to full council the opportunity for comment and recommendations for the staff based on the non-action that the committee took. But I don't think it is out of line to offer that feedback to staff.
And as I said, you know, I defer to the city attorney. His, his job is to represent the city in these matters. He is also our parliamentarian. We're approving the minutes and actions of each of those committees, but we're not allowed to speak on all of the actions that those committees took. I agree with you, Alder Dalton, but that's something I'll bring up with the city attorney. And if we need to change our policies and the way we operate with our consent agenda, we'll do that. But for now, I'm not going to allow that to be pulled. And if Alder Niebon would like to have it on a future agenda item, we can certainly do that.
Mayor, if I may just clarify slightly further here. Just look at the first three pages of your agenda, just the numbered items. That's the notice that appears in the paper. So we can only discuss things that someone reading only those pages would have noticed is going to be discussed. And if it just says minutes and actions, but doesn't elaborate upon what those were, it, I mean, there's a reason that we do list the individual items below. For instance, the Parks Commission meeting has 2, 4, 5, 6, 7 below it because were the, those were the actual actions that were taken by that committee. Now, what happened with the item last week that Alder Niebon is, is looking to bring forward is they ultimately decided not to take action. Now, if, if we want, we can, we can change our, our process for how we draft and structure our agendas to include everything that was on that agenda independently of the, independent of any action or non-action. You know, for instance, you know, we could have had the item listed even though there was no action taken. Then it could be discussed right now. But I'm just saying, we cannot look to just what's in, we can't look to what's in the full packet in order to essentially not catch the public by surprise.
Understood. It's just the comment says, "In the minutes, the committee took no action and sent it back to staff to come up with an appeal process for overnight parking for people who need it." By sending it back to staff, my interpretation is that's, that's the action they took. So that's okay. We, as I said, we'll, we'll get it on a future agenda item, and the city attorney will, will work on, if we need to restructure our agendas, we'll do that. Okay, so I don't recall anything else that was asked to be pulled from the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to pull anything from the consent agenda other than that overnight parking issue? Okay, I see none. Then at that point, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I may, I make a motion, Alder Morrow, to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by President Johnson, right? I didn't see who did that. Yes? All right, President Johnson, seconds. Any discussion on anything that's listed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Dalton, aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebon.
Symbolic no.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
I too will vote in the negative to follow that symbolic no.
Zarazua.
I'll vote no.
Nable.
Yes.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Eight to three, motion passes.
Eight to three, the consent agenda is approved. For those who may have joined late, we had a request to move Item 12 up to the next agenda item, so we are doing that. So next on your agenda, Alders, on page 81 of your packet, you will see the Development Agreement for the redevelopment of the Fox Theater at 1116 and 1128 Main Street. Director Knasek, do you want to offer a recap?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and council. Before you tonight is the Development Agreement between the City of Stevens Point, the Redevelopment Authority of the city, and Wildcard Corporation. Wildcard is proposing to construct a outdoor beer garden behind the existing Fox Theater and then utilize the existing or the remaining portion of the building as part of an event space. Part of this development agreement would include selling the property, the Fox property itself to Wildcard for $1, and then the area behind the Fox, which is currently owned by the Redevelopment Authority for a dollar as well. Additionally, as part of it, we would be relocating the small green space to the adjacent right-of-way next to Strong's Avenue, and then be constructing a new parking area. That would be done at the expense of Wildcard. Finance committee met last week, recommended approval as presented. Staff would also recommend approval as presented. Any changes or anything like that that this body may decide to do, I would recommend that instead of trying to change them on the fly here just because there are two other entities involved in this development agreement that you send it back to finance to work out some of the kinks. But as I said earlier, staff is very supportive of this proposed development agreement and the proposed development itself. We additionally believe it's consistent with the donation agreement between the Sanders family and the Arts Alliance that has been a topic of much discussion within this body. So with that, I'd answer any questions that the council may have. I know that there were a few folks that hopped on. They may have further comments as well.
Thank you, Director. And I know that the city attorney has confirmed that he believes it is compliant with the agreement that was between the Sanders family and the original D'Oniz, which was, I believe, the Arts Alliance of Portage County, now defunct. I know this has been a topic of discussion for quite some time. I told someone the other day, we're finally seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. This, there have been some concerns that this wasn't properly noticed and that the public didn't have a chance to chime in. But I want to recap the, the process in which the, we brought us here today. Of course, the baking, building has sat vacant since mid-'80s. The Arts Alliance took it over, I believe, in 2011 or 2012. And at that point, they switched over to create, or sometime during that time, switched over to create. The maintenance of the building had been not kept up as well as we had hoped. And upon some recent inspections, we found some serious structural issues. There was a request made to get those fixed, or we would have to tear down the building, at which point, Create, Portage County, said that they basically did not have enough money to make the repairs nor tear it down. We worked out an agreement to save the facade, and the city took possession of the Fox Theater in December of 2019. At that point, we got council approval to make considerations to make the building safe. They authorized the funding to do that. And concurrently, we are working on a request for proposals to try and see what ideas might actually happen. Of course, over the last 35 years or so, there have been many ideas for the Fox Theater, but very few of them actually had the meat to stand up to the financial impact, the business plan, those sorts of things. So when we put out that request for proposals, we put the request out, and I might have the dates wrong. and I might have the dates wrong, so Director, correct me if I'm wrong. March 16th, I believe, was the date that we released the request for proposals. Opened it up nationwide. I know it was in the news. I know that we took out ads and trade publications. We had it on our social media, many people were talking about it. The director took at least a half a dozen groups through the building for onsite kind of inspections to see what they were working with. I fielded some phone calls myself, at which point then June 12th, I believe, was the deadline. So we allowed almost a full three months for people to get their proposals in. At the June 12th deadline, we had two proposals. We then assembled the team of interested parties to look at it. Obviously, we couldn't have everybody involved, but we took kind of a demographic of myself, Community Development Director Knosky, our Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Director, Sarah Brish, the Executive Director of the Portage County Business Council, Todd Kukon, and the Alder for the District, ideally representing the downtown, Alder person, Tori Jennings. We scored and evaluated each of those proposals and there was a clear choice. We unanimously recommended the Wildcard proposal to move forward. The director worked out the details of the development agreement and that's what you see before you today. So the legal requirements for noticing that RFP are really pretty lax. We're not even legally required to publish it in a newspaper. But we did all of those things and then some, kept it open for three months because obviously we want the biggest, best use of that property for the downtown. Not only the citizens, of course, but to bring more people into the downtown to help out those local businesses that exist down there. So that's what you have before you. The developer's agreement is in your packet. Alder Shore, you had some comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to hold back comments until later. What I'd like to do right now is just clarify a couple of points of information. So the first was, was it the relocation of the green space? And whose responsibility that was? Maybe I misunderstood it in the last discussion. I thought I understood that together with a facade grant that was on the city, but you just said that it was on the property owner. That was one question. The other is about the five years that were mentioned and how that works.
Director?
Yeah, so a great catch, Alder Shore. You are correct. So the relocation of the green space would more or less be coordinated by Wildcard. As discussed at previous Finance Committee meetings, we would, the city would pay for that out of TIF number six. I don't expect it to be anything terribly expensive mainly because we already, we've stored the benches and the tables that were back there, relocating the gazebo that's there now. So a lot of the, the infrastructure, if you will, is already existing. We would just be relocating that to the Strong's Avenue green space. So yeah, excellent catch, my apologies. And then relating to your second question or your second comment, yes, the facade grant is part of it as well. So I think that those were the two questions you had.
The five years.
Oh, the five year, yep, my apologies. So essentially what we wanted, we recognize that this is something that the developer's taking on and we want them to be successful, but it's important that, given the, the investment that the city has in this property and the raising of the back two-thirds and then of the relocation, the green space and the facade grant itself, we wanted to ensure that that use was going to be there for a minimum of five years. So once they receive their final occupancy permit, they have to operate it as an event space in Beer Garden for at least five years. After that point, if they were to sell the property or they, they realize it wasn't a, a use that works for them financially anymore, then they could use it for something else. But it was important to us that, that we put that in there as, as part of the agreement. So unlike, you know, other development agreements that are building based, you know, like the Lullaby Site, for example, they can't, they, they go and they build this facility, that facility is not going to magically disappear in five years, or we hope not. So because we're regulating the use of the property, more specifically, we felt having that minimum five year was really important.
Thank you, Director.
Any other comments?
Alder Nabel, District Three?
Alder Nabel, let's allow members of the public to speak first, if there are any, and then we can bring it back to the Alders, please. Any members of the public wishing to speak?
Mayor?
Yeah, so as a part of the Evaluation and Selection Committee and as the Director of the Stevens Point Area Convention and Visitor Bureau, I really support this newly imagined space. I think it'll fill a niche in the community. For decades, the Stevens Point Area Convention and Visitor Bureau has been promoting the area as a region full of meeting, convention and event venues. And so this really aligns with our marketing plan, with our sales efforts. As all of you know, we're centrally located in the state, making us an ideal location to host a meeting or convention or retreat or board meeting or whatever it might be. So I feel like this would really complement some of the spaces that we have and offer something unique, an alternative, something different for the community. And additionally, the Wildcard proposal not only offers an event space, but now more than ever, we've seen an uptick of interest from our community and from our visitors and outdoor seating. And I think the Beer Garden really accomplishes that. So I like that it offers the outdoor patio seating, then provides for safe distancing. Who knows how long this pandemic is going to continue on? So I think it offers another niche as well.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Director Kukon from the Business Council, you've had a question, your comment as well?
Yeah, I'll unmute first before I start talking.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor, thanks, City Council. I also served on the committee with Sarah and Tori and Ryan and Mike. And the mayor already went through the process and that was something that was important to me, that there was a, I guess, a certifiable, if that's the right word, process with the RFP, which was actually 37 pages long. So was a very detailed RFP from my standpoint. And we, we both, as a selection committee, we both scored the proposals independently, submitted those scores, and then we had interviews with both of the, the two proposals, the two folks who submitted the proposals. And again, as the mayor said, we had a, we had unanimous choice to move forward with the Wildcard, Wildcard proposing, proposal, excuse me, all along, understanding full well that the city council makes the, the final decision. I think with the Wildcard proposal, there were several things, several things that were of interest to me. One was that they were planning to take the facility back to its original purpose, original facade, which was the Opera House. So I'm, I'm interested and excited to see that. They also brought back some of the history of the area and talking about the Andre Beer Garden, GF Andre was one of the first people who was very involved in developing that space. They've also done work downtown at the 1136 location. I know that there, as a corporation, they're very community centered and also they've been a growing business in town, which is great to see. They talked about in their proposal about using locally sourced materials, which they've done to quite a degree at 1136, which I think is important, valuable as well. And then just to piggyback on what Sarah, Sarah said, as far as a community gathering space, we've had a couple, community-wide, we called it new era at that standpoint, at that point in time. And Sarah was involved as well as many other organizations and people in the community. And one of the things that came out of that was this type of, of a community gathering space. So it fits a lot of what the community has been asking for, for a number of years. And thanks for giving a minute to say a few things.
Thank you, Director. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Bob Weir.
Bob Weir, go ahead.
Yeah, I wasn't planning on speaking on this issue, but then Director Knosky mentioned something about the funding for the landscaping and I believe the facade also. He mentioned that it would be taken out of TIF six. My understanding, TIF six has, is and has been for a long time underwater. What's the status of TIF six at this point in time? Is it starting to return increment or not?
And it will be, Mr. Weir. It's not directly related, but we're going to answer that question for you anyway. Comptroller, Treasurer, Latik, are you still there? Can you answer Mr. Weir's question for him?
Yes, I'm still here and basically, TIF six is starting to do a lot better. One of the key things that we did is we now have two other TIF districts, TIF five and TIF seven, also helping TIF six and supporting TIF six with some of their increments. So over the next three years, what you're going to see is you're going to see a very significant amount of repayment where TIF six is going to be able to repay most of its IOU to the city. So that, the situation is definitely improving there where I'm comfortable with using the, the money from TIF six.
Thank you, Comptroller. Any other questions, Mr. Weir?
No, I, you know, I guess TIF two and TIF five are going to pay for. But TIF six, that, that answered my question about this.
Actually, Mr. Weir, what the comptroller said was that TIF six is going to be repaying those because it's been doing much better. So thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Chelsea Pifner?
Hey, thanks for saying my name right. Can y'all hear me?
I've lived here my whole life and I'm a block away from your family's parks.
Right, so I'm in Shorewood, in fact. I'm in the Milwaukee area, I've been down here for many, many years now. But of course, all of you know that my family has some very deep roots in Stevens Point and I even have some roots in the Fox Theater. My great grandmother played violin on the stage in 1914. And I have been paying very close attention to the situation with the Fox. Late in the game a little bit, but enough to watch what was going on in the city. And I have to say that I really support this idea that is on the proposal before you. It's, it's a fantastic proposal based on ideas of what Sarah was saying about how your city is lacking some event space downtown and whatnot. I am the co, or the chair of our reunion committee and we tend to always have a little bit of a problem finding a reunion spot and I'm already planning on doing our third year at the Fox if it all goes through. So I'd also like to say, you know, I have been paying close attention to this. I have been watching Finance Committee meetings, I can't even believe it, and watching your council meetings. And I did know that the proposal was up and that they were asking for proposals because I was involved in watching the sale of the theater seats happen and paying attention to everything. And I feel that if I'm paying attention from this far away, that if your community also wants to be involved in the Fox, like I want to be involved in the Fox, I really hope to be involved in some of the history and the workings of it as it goes up, that they would notice that those proposals went out early and everything too. And I'm really disappointed to hear that there were only two proposals that came through. And I think Wildcard has a really beautiful idea. I think it will bring a great popularity to your downtown with that hotel right behind there and the parking. I think you have something beautiful that could hopefully last and be resilient and sustainable through the future right now. I, I know a lot of people have complained about the marquee coming down, I've been hearing that. I know that Historical Society is involved in that. That's another thing, that it's going to be beautiful as its original facade and that Wildcard is interested into restoring that kind of history and interested in keeping that involved in your city. And I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing you pass this all this evening if I'm, if I'm lucky and that it keeps moving forward the way that it should. I hope that your community stays more involved and I do expect to come home someday. I do have a mom there and I do hope to end up coming home someday. I've been involved in a lot of history lately. I do run the Historic Stevens Point page, which has been a little bit dead lately, but you know, we are in the middle of a pandemic and I do live in another city. But I thank you for your time letting me say something and I do intend to keep watching and paying attention. And if you've noticed me on Facebook, I sometimes have a really big mouth. And I, I like to, to stand up for what I think is right and something I really believe in is saving old buildings and Stevens Point, man, you guys knock stuff down. So let's not, let's not lose this one and let's do something really good for it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Pifner. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no indicators on the screen or in the chat room, I am going to bring it back. Alder Nabel, you had a question regarding the facade grant. Alder Nabel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Nabel, District Three. I just had a question on the, on the facade grant, if it would stay to the requirements that it has for other buildings, facade, that it'd be the 30%, I think it is, that would be allowed of the project itself to be given as a grant? Is that correct, 30%? Am I?
It's 40% of the, the amount, correct? That has to be matched. Just like other projects, typically we allow up to $30,000 for facade grants with a 40% match. We have in the past on major downtown projects, 1055 Main is, is probably the, the most recent example where we went above and beyond the 30,000. And that really ends up being the appetite of the Historic Preservation Commission and the city council. So just like tonight, we have another facade grant before you. That is another development agreement, more or less, that'll come before you with a different amount, if the developer so chooses to go above and beyond the 30,000 that we typically allow.
So, so then my question would be, is that, do we have like a cutoff? Because since we are selling this for a dollar, or you know, each property, part of this is for a dollar, I'm just hoping we're not going to be overly extending our grant to the point of where we're paying, well, at least will that come back to us as a council so that we have some say in how much money we're giving away free on this project?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the facade grant agreement will come back before the council. I believe we, at the start of 2020, had $200,000 in our facade grant line item budget, either 200,000 or 100,000, I can't recall off the top of my head. Maybe the comptroller can answer that. But we would, we like to use that money. The last two years, we have not utilized the, the fullest extent of that line item. And so anytime we have the opportunity to, to use more of it above and beyond the 30,000, I think that's something that we should take into consideration on a per-project basis. I will add that the developer did indicate that they don't intend to ask for more than 30,000. However, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this development as a thing of development.
But it does come back to us then with a dollar amount. That, that's what my big question was. Thank you very much.
Yeah, if you look further down your agenda, you'll see that we actually have one of those considerations this evening.
I do, yeah. Thank you.
Any Alders wishing to speak or a motion? President Johnson?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for everybody who've, you know, written in and are, sent emails, both for and against, and of course, the speakers who spoke this evening. I'd also like to thank the review committee because I don't think it was any small task going through the proposals and, and trying to find the right fit. So thank you to Sarah and to Todd and, and the others who took their time to help the City of Stevens Point. I appreciate it. Saying all that, I'd like to make a motion to agree that, make a motion to approve the developer's agreement as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Nabel.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion there? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Nibon? Nibon?
You're off mute, Mary. You could nod. Can you hear, maybe she can't hear us?
Yes.
Oh, she says yes, okay.
Did that, oh, okay. I'm not sure what happened there. I.
Leek?
Aye.
Aye.
Dalton?
Dalton, aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Okay.
Unanimous consent, that developer's agreement is approved. We will go back to the regular agenda item now, regular agenda order. Of course, the numbering will be a little bit different. So we're going to go to item number six now, which is on page 33 of your packet. And this is a little bit on me. I wanted to bring up the discussion in regards to the policy of requiring materials that people want to consider. So our ordinance, our current ordinance says that So our ordinance, our current ordinance says that, and I'm going to, I'm going to read this exactly here. Give me a second. If I can find it. Anyway, it allows for the items. So an individual who wishes to present written or other material to the common council for review shall present the material to the clerk's office no later than 3:45 on the day of the meeting. And then, of course, the clerk shall disseminate the materials to the council. If an individual is unable to present that material by 3:45, they must ask and be granted permission from the council to disseminate material at the meeting. Obviously, with virtual meetings, we don't have that luxury of disseminating information. But it became apparent that we're getting materials not only after 3:45 that wish to be shared with the council, but we may miss things and we certainly don't want to do that. That's a very short timeframe. And in some cases, for example, because it's supposed to carry forward to any of the other meetings or any other committees, the Board of Water and Sewerage Commissioners meets at noon. By that ordinance, someone could submit something at 3:45 that day for the meeting, which occurred three hours and 45 minutes ago. So what I want to do is I want to get the council's consideration here. My recommendation would be at least 24 hours before the the meeting. That also comes with a caveat because our Monday meetings would then allow someone to submit something on Sunday, which is okay because the clerk's usually in on Monday. But we want to make sure that we give everybody ample time to review it. And by everybody, I mean not only the members of the council, but the members of the public who might request that information. So my suggestion would be, and this is just a starting point in regards to this, is 24 hours prior to the start of any of our committee or commission meetings, including the council. And if it's, if we come to an agreement here, we'll have the city attorney draw up the ordinance amendment for consideration at a future date. So that's my two cents worth. I know it was a little convoluted in the in the email or the memo. It was just one of those things where I was doing it on the fly and I apologize. So what we're really looking for is input on an ordinance change. President Johnson, you said you'd had a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for putting together the memo and also the consideration of this policy. As most of you know, I also sit on county board, as did the mayor. And at our county board, I should say. And county board, the deadline is 24 hours before the start of the meeting. After that time, it's as if the information does not arrive. We we just don't accept it. And it does help create clarity when, once that meeting starts, to have all of this inbound. And honestly, Clerk Clerk Kramer, I mean, what you've been doing in trying to share that information out in a timely manner, you deserve like a round of applause. You've been doing an amazing job on a number of levels, but just fielding all of that information. So it's it's been getting unwieldy. And so I I'm appreciative of of the the memo and the effort. And I would strongly endorse a policy in ordinance for 24 hours in advance of a meeting for any written comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President Johnson. I'll, I have Tori Jennings and then Alder Nabel.
I think you've addressed the concern I was going to raise because I certainly support this in spirit. But my concern was when people could submit. Because often the packet is not out until Thursday, sometimes Friday, so people may not be reading it until the weekend. And then if they don't, then they're sending off their email on Monday because no one's in the office. But it sounds like when you say 24 hours in advance, they may send it in on Sunday and it's queued up to be distributed. I just want to confirm that's what you mean.
That is exactly what I mean. Obviously, the Alders would have less time, you know, if they submitted Sunday evening. For example, you won't see it until Monday morning when the clerk comes in to disseminate that information. The other thing to note is that because we're we're in a virtual environment now, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't allow that person to speak. If you don't have your material in 24 hours in advance, for example, you would still be allowed to come to the meeting. And you can do that virtually now. You can do it on your phone from basically anywhere on the planet that has reception. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be stifling anybody's, that's anybody's comments. That's the last thing I would want to do. But we do need to make it a little more realistic, take a little pressure off of the clerk's office and afford the courtesy of the Alders having some time to at least review the material before the meeting. Last week, we got, we got comments for the six o'clock meeting submitted at 4:38, I think, was the last one I saw. So less than an hour and a half before the meeting and then nobody, of course, is in the office. So we were lucky that we were able to get it out because we were monitoring the emails. All right, so we.
Mayor, this would apply to staff as well because we've also had incidences where, instances where things have come from staff right before the meeting.
So here's what I would ask. Staff is called upon frequently to answer questions on very short notice. I would ask for some latitude for staff because they may not be able to get all of the information that they need 24 hours in advance. For example, let's say hypothetically that, well, the, I'm going to call on Mr. Ware's question. Mr. Ware had a question about how TIF six was doing. The staff person may not have that information immediately, but they will have it before the meeting. So I would ask for some latitude with staff. These would just be, in general, comments and questions from the public. And of course, exceptions can be made. I understand that circumstances will come up where it may be something went screwy. But as a general policy ordinance, I guess, in this case, we'd want to try and get that information in as soon as we possibly can. Anything else, Alder Jennings? No? Okay, then we'll go to Alder Nabel, then Alder Dalton.
Thank you, Mayor. I also am relieved to hear that it would be included if it was on Sunday that it was sent and that it would be gotten out. Because we, I have seen where we've had many times where the information we're getting, what's on the agenda, isn't until Sunday. And the same goes as as Mr. Ware had mentioned is we don't have it, you know, publicized in a newspaper like it used to be, where it would be out on a Wednesday for the public to be able to then get involved and have the time to send out something. So that's where my biggest concern was, is that when we don't get things until Friday, then it's very hard for us or the public to be able to find people that they can get that information out or find out more and be able to make their comments. So I'm glad that they are still allowed to be able to speak. But I do understand the 24-hour thing. And and secondly, according to Alder Jennings, when she mentioned about staff, I guess what I would like to clarify is that also does that mean staff adding new things to the agenda that comes in then the day of? Because that makes it really difficult to.
I can tell you that, yes, and I agree with Alder Nabel there. For agenda items, we would still follow the same policy that we do. However, I need to stress that sometimes there isn't an avoidance. Sometimes things come up and they're they're very timely in nature. I do my best, as any of the directors can attest, to minimize those last-minute ads. And if it can wait, it needs to wait. But if there is something pushing and pressing, we've had a few items on, well, what was then Public Protection, where the event was before the next meeting. Rather than have a special meeting, we did an addendum. And that still will happen on occasion. We understand, as I said, that there will be exceptions to all of this. But as a general policy and ordinance, in this case, changing the ordinance to 24 hours in advance, I think is going to be a big help, not only to the citizens, but to the staff and to the older persons to give them time to digest that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Dalton?
Yeah, I guess my recommendation for this policy is that the hours before, the submissions before would be three hours. I think taking away an entire day between when agenda and materials are out for consideration and when someone has the ability to respond to that is really unfair to the public. And I am not supportive of tightening that timeframe, which is already incredibly tight for most people. And I think while it's easy to assume that just having the, you know, online meetings means anyone can show up, that people who are active in the community may also have other meetings and commitments on Monday nights at whatever specific or, you know, Mondays during the day. And so to have a specific time where they have to be in appearance in order to contribute is really unfair when the, you know, they may have been able to submit something on that day in a timely matter regarding that. And considering that the city hall is open until 4:00 PM, I think having it, you know, one final check at the end of the day for the clerk to send us out something, that's time for many of us after work. Or I often, you know, check right before the meeting to make sure, you know, you've got all your information together for consideration. And so I think 24 hours is an unreasonable period of time and I would like to see it substantially shortened to three hours.
Thank you, Alder Dalton. Any other comments? Alder Zirazua?
Yeah, so I guess I I would be in support of this only in knowing that, you know, I know I'm not the only one. We have other jobs. And before the meeting, I am checking my email, but sometimes there are substantial emails to read that have come in. So in order to be able to give them enough attention, I think we do need more time in knowing, you know, knowing that, you know, within this window of time, we won't get any new emails in. But I do think that with that, we would need agendas to be available a little bit sooner because I think Friday is too late for people to be able to have that time to process. Even for me, that's difficult because if I have questions, you know, they all have to go to the directors on Mondays. So just, I think that would help if those two things went together. If agendas came out earlier and we did have a set timeframe for people to submit their comments. But I do think with that, you know, even if people miss that deadline, a lot of things, we don't just talk about one time. So if they do miss the committee meeting, we, they still have time to connect with us in in the week before the common council meeting. So it's not like that's their last chance if they're not able to come to the meeting and they don't get that in before the committee meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Just going through the screens here.
Taking any from the public?
Absolutely, Bob.
Okay, Bob, we're again. You know, this letter that I wrote, my my big concern obviously was the fact that it was an attempt to create a policy which was contravened by the ordinance. And I think you understand that too, at this point anyway. The reference to the county board, the way that things, or county board. County board is a total of 25 members. And you and Alder Johnson are aware of the fact that the way the county board operates is that they operate by committee. They have committee meetings. The committees come up with a resolution. They send it to the General Government Ops Committee or whatever that is on a seven o'clock on a Wednesday morning. They they prepare the agenda. And then the agenda goes out at the county board meeting. And the only thing the 25 supervisors do is walk in there. Some have and some have not even opened their envelopes with their committee package or the meeting package. And they vote, they have a resolution. And the resolution is from this, you know, plethora of committees. And basically, all they do is vote on those resolutions that have already been passed. They haven't had any input into production of resolutions or anything else, such as the city council does with your personnel committee, finance and so forth, where all, generally, all the, the 11 Alders are present. 24 hours in advance of a common council meeting is probably all right, provided that people that don't have access to email have the ability to get a piece of paper. They may have a paper on it that they'd like to be considered, but they can't get in the door of the city hall at three o'clock on a Sunday afternoon. So the only method that people would have would be 24 hours in advance of all the committee meetings or the city's council meetings and committee meetings are on Mondays, including plan commission. So if if the people are even aware of what's going to happen at those committee meetings, they have to get something into the clerk's office 24 hours in advance on a Sunday. I can do it by email, obviously. I did it. But what about the people that don't have access to the cell phone? So, you know, that that needs to be taken into consideration. There are a lot of people that don't have access to to the internet or to cell phones. And then also, they would have to have, they should have adequate notice. I think the Chapter 19 of the state statutes, as far as open meetings and so forth, are concerned. The, you know, specific, there are specifics in their minimums that to submit something. But common sense says that you should allow the public, you know, information as early as possible. And in the case of the agenda for this meeting, as I mentioned in my, in my letter to the Alders, and you've got a copy, and I think the city attorney got a copy, I mentioned tonight's meeting wasn't posted on the website until Friday morning, late Friday morning. Your letter or your memo about changing the times was dated Thursday. I don't know when it got to the clerk's office. But that's inadequate information, you know, inadequate advance notice for the public. So unless there's an emergency, and I understand there are emergency situations that might require fire truck, you know, response, timing. But in most cases, I think staff should be able to get the agendas out for both committee meetings and also council meetings.
Thank you, Mr.
Earlier than what they are.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Ware. I appreciate it. You do bring up some very good points. And I'm sure that all the Alders know, but I'm going to reiterate this for the the general public that's listening. The law requires us to publish our agendas 24 hours prior to the meeting. We exceed that. When possible, we want to get the agendas out as early as we possibly can. Sometimes that's that's not always Wednesday or Thursday. But we work on it to the best of our abilities to make sure that we get them out as soon as we possibly can. That won't stop. We will continue to do that and we will continue to try and improve to make sure that the public has the best information as early as possible in regards to all of the things we're discussing. Just earlier this week, the the Downtown Point Alliance had a request to get put on some agendas and we added them to the list. So they're published at city hall, they're published in the newspaper, they're available on our website as early as possible, and we will continue to do that. Are there any other comments in regards to the timing? Alder Dalton, your hand is still up. Did you have an additional comment?
Yeah, I just had the one quick thing. I mean, the point that you just brought, Mr. Mayor, is exactly why I think we should not be supportive of a policy is that for best intentions, you know, and obviously that we do try to and actually get the agendas published 24 hours. The reality is we have most of our meetings on a Monday. And so to say that we don't accept materials for consideration 24 hours when we could at the last minute or in some reality, have somebody decide to put an agenda out 24 hours, that seems like a very inappropriate policy to have, and I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. We actually don't have a proposal to support, though. President Johnson, you had your hand up, I think. Did you have another comment?
Yeah, I just wish to defend my colleagues on county board. They were accused of showing up at meetings unprepared, opening board packets at the county board meeting at the, by the, one of the previous speakers. I I want to assure the public that my colleagues on county board come prepared to discuss the issues at hand. And I think it's unfair. And I think it's unfair to say that they show up and simply vote on resolutions they have no idea about. So just want to put that in there. I still want to reiterate that there is, there is a standard of reasonableness that we should all expect to have the information at hand in order to make decisions when we come to a meeting. And giving twenty-four hours at least allows the preparation and research necessary to respond to any of the issues that arise. So once again, I strength, stand strongly in support of this, Mr. Mayor, and am willing to help in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no action that needs to be taken. If any Alders or members of the public have any additional comments, by all means, submit those comments to my office or the city clerk's office. And I believe we'll have a draft ordinance amendment for you in September at committees with at least twenty-four hours notice. All right, next on the agenda is item number seven, which is on page thirty-four of your packets, and that's to award the contract. Contract number twenty dash eleven for KB Willet Arena Lower Level Flooring to Becker Arena Products in an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand and five dollars. Director Kramer?
Remember on the packet, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this outlines the project. We had two bidders recommending approval to the low bidder. We did try to do, attempted to do some removal ourselves, hoping to save some money. But one of the worst parts of this project is how dirty that old rubber flooring gets to take it out. So we were unable to, weren't successful. So we're recommending award of the base bid and alternate one, letting them do the removal.
Alder Shore?
Thanks. I try to really clue into all things Kirkie Park. So I would like to move approval of the bid.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Morrow. Discussion? Comments from the public? Seeing no indicators, I will ask the clerk to call a roll. If you are in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no.
Morrow?
Hi.
Fischler?
Hi.
Dalton?
Dalton?
Hi.
Leek?
Hi.
Nibon?
Hi.
Slawinski?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Zerazua?
Hi.
Nabel?
Hi.
Shore?
Hi.
Jennings?
Hi.
Eleven zero?
Unanimous consent that is approved. You know, it's funny because I can see myself from sitting here. I watch the camera and I can see myself slouching. So good posture. Remember that. Good posture. Item number eight is on page thirty-seven of your packet, and that is the twenty-twenty agreement for harvesting purposes on city-owned land with parcel identified in the agenda. This land is out on the east side. It was an acquisition that we acquired several years ago. And the, we've had a contract to harvest the hay or the grasses that are growing there. And we're asking for consideration for the twenty-twenty agreement. We'll actually be upping the lease rate from thirty dollars to fifty dollars an acre. Director Knasek, anything to add there?
Nope. Would recommend approval.
I as well. Alder Jennings?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Alder Nibon, second.
Actually, I had Nabel's hand up first. So we're giving the second to Alder Nabel. I, I understand it's your, your district, Alder Nibon, and I want to acknowledge that, but she was quicker with the hand. We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement. Any discussion there? Seeing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Jennings?
Hi.
Shore?
Hi.
Nabel?
Hi.
Zerazua?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Slawinski?
Hi.
Nibon?
Hi.
Leek?
Hi.
Dalton?
Dalton?
Hi.
Fischler?
Hi.
Okay, eleven zero.
Eleven zero, that is adopted. On page forty-two, you're gonna find an ordinance amendment for section two point two eight in regards to renaming the Public Protection Committee, the Public Policy and General Government. Those are some ordinance changes in regards to the name change. What are your wishes? Alder Nabel?
Alder Nabel, District Three, I move to approve that change.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by President Johnson. Discussion? For those of you who are watching this for the first time, we pause a little bit longer on the discussion, just so I can go through the screens or if people need time to unmute themselves. I see nothing indicating anyone wishing to speak, so I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Morrow?
Hi.
Fischler?
Hi.
Dalton?
Dalton?
Hi.
Leek?
Hi.
Nibon?
Hi.
Slawinski?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Zerazua?
Hi.
Nabel?
Hi.
Shore?
I guess.
Jennings?
Hi.
Eleven zero.
Eleven zero. Alder Shore, for future reference, I guess is not a vote. Item number ten is on page forty-seven of your packet, and that's a resolution to rezone twenty-seven twenty-five Water Street from R five Multiple Family Two Residential to M white led, M one Light Industrial. Director Knasek?
This is a request from Stevens Point Brewery to rezone a single parcel adjacent to their campus from the R five Multiple Family Two Residential to the M one Light Industrial. The item was before Plan Commission earlier this month. They did unanimously recommend approval to the city council with the two conditions stipulated within the resolution. First, that the property be combined. This is mainly due to the fact that the property is not wide enough to be in the M one zoning. So in order to make it legally compliant and that we're not creating an illegal, legal lot essentially that they combine into one. And then, of course, any additions that they do to the brewery that they will need to receive with, with proper requirements of, of the city zoning code. They are looking at doing some type of expansion, likely a tap house, a small parking area, things of that nature. They're still working out much of the details, but that'll be before the Plan Commission likely and the city council in the coming year.
Thank you very much. Alder persons, what are your wishes?
Alder Nibon here.
Alder Nibon here, I-
Move approval.
Move.
Thank you. And we have the second given to President Johnson. Discussion? Seeing none. And I, I need to note that I saw several Alders' hands go up in regards to the second. I know everybody's excited about this, but I grabbed the first one I saw. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Jennings?
Hi.
Shore?
Hi.
Nabel?
Hi.
Zerazua?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Slawinski?
Hi.
Nibon?
Hi.
Leek?
Hi.
Dalton?
Dalton?
Hi.
Fischler?
Hi.
Morrow?
Hi.
Okay, eleven zero.
They unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Item number eleven is on page forty-eight of your packet, and that's a facade improvement grant agreement between the city of Stevens Point and sixteen sixteen Main Street LLC for a property located at twelve twenty-one Second Street. Director, Director Knasek?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Before tonight's, the facade improvement grant contract for twelve twenty-one Second Street, the property is currently or will be remodeled for a higher-end liquor store, wine bar, things of that nature. There are a number of facade improvements that they propose to do. The Historic Preservation Committee did recommend approval of this facade grant program contract in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents. With that, if you look at the memo, there are seven items that they propose to do on both the west and south facade of the property. Staff supportive and would recommend approval as presented.
Thank you, Director. Alder Jennings, I believe I saw your hand up. Did I, I did? Alder Jennings?
Yeah, I just wanted to state my praise for Mike Beckham, the property owner, and Keith Bisac on this proposal. They have been so careful from the very beginning in terms of involving both myself and Alder Zerazua downtown, bringing this concept forward very carefully. Their sensitivity to historic preservation, their love of the downtown. Not only is this going to really improve this blighted facade, basically, but the, the business coming forward is really, really exciting. And I think it's one that we will, we'll all be super excited about. So I just wanted to thank them for this. And I would like to motion, go ahead and motion approval.
Thank you. I'll give the second to Alder Zerazua. Any additional comments? Alder Zerazua, go ahead.
I guess I just want to echo what Alder Jennings said, that it's just been a really fascinating process to see the business idea that they have and to see this coming to Stevens Point. I think it really adds something unique to our downtown. And I'm really happy that there's, they are very conscious of the historical value of the building and the appearance, especially being right on the square. It's, you know, a very prominent position. I really think the plans that they have are going to make it more attractive to our downtown. And I look forward to seeing the process of the business develop.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? We'll go to President Johnson, then Alder Nabel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I just, I'm very excited about this, and I agree with what Alder Jennings and Alder Zerazua said. I, I got a sneak peek of, of this project almost a year ago now. So being able to, to see it unfold, I'm, I'm very pleased. Keith and, and his partners are District Five residents, and I, a pleasure of meeting him and learning about it. So to see it come to fruition, this is awesome. So wonderful, wonderful project, and I'm very excited about it.
Thank you. Alder Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor. I also like to say that I'm very pleased with this project also and that I, I know Mike Beckham personally, and he did contact me and talked about this and, and how much work Keith has put into this and how excited Keith is to do this and make this a really, make this, this place work. We've had something there before that didn't work and which we had hoped it would. And I also have to say that that area has always been kind of a negative corner or facade area over there with apartments that were there that, that, that never looked good over there. This is going to be wonderful to add this on to our downtown. So, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I will have the clerk call the, wait, Alder Nibon?
I was making a note here. I just wanted to speak from an urban planning perspective on how important these business facade grants are. A lot of times, they go to small businesses to starting up and that, that care about the community. And it's a way to bring creative people into areas that we want to have them. So I think the fact that the city does something like this, makes this available, is a feather in our cap.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, clerk, would you please call a roll?
Morrow?
Hi.
Fischler?
Hi.
Dalton?
Hi.
Leek?
Hi.
Nibon?
Hi.
Slawinski?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Zerazua?
Hi.
Nabel?
Hi.
Shore?
The trouble, I'm using myself. Hi.
And Jennings?
Hi.
Okay, eleven zero.
Unanimous consent that facade improvement grant agreement is approved. Since we took item number twelve earlier in the agenda, our agenda is exhausted, and we will adjourn at eight twenty-four. Have a good evening. Yep, eight twenty-four. Have a good evening, everyone.